Good morning, everyone, and welcome. Thank you for joining us. It is 9:02 a.m. on this Tuesday, March 19th, 2024. We'll go ahead and call to order our special board meeting this morning. Thank you, board members, board colleagues, for joining this morning. Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Goheen, and to all of our staff who are present, thank you for joining us, and anyone watching online, thank you for joining us again this morning. It's great to see you all. Hope everyone had an excellent break last week, and we're all back and ready to continue on with the semester and finish out the school year. So, we will call this meeting to order as we do at every board meeting. We'll read our board norms and protocols. The board, we agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we're following our norms when conducting district business. Again, thank you for joining us this morning, everyone. And with that, Ms. Smith, would you please do a roll call?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Robert Mylan, Jr.
Robert Mylan, Jr., present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, present.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Board, if you saw my email last night, we just had a little bit of technical glitch where we didn't technically notice this morning's meeting. With the 48-hour anticipation, it was noticed publicly yesterday morning, although we all had on our calendar, we announced it at the last board meeting, it wasn't publicly noticed. So, because of that and our policy, we'll need to, if you all agree, to continue with the meeting, we'll need to waive notice of the meeting. So, I'm glad everyone is here so that we could do that properly. So, I would ask if we would, if each of you would waive notice to the 48-hour notice for the meeting this morning. Unfortunately, again, just wasn't noticed correctly, so we want to make sure that we follow our policy. So, Mr. Goheen, remind me, do we need a motion to waive notice?
I think that you could have the clerk just do a roll call.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Goheen. Ms. Smith, would you please do a roll call? And this is whether you agree to waive the public notice, the 48-hour notice per our policy.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan, Jr.
Robert Mylan, Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, and apologies for that. Next, would entertain a motion to approve today's special agenda?
I moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? And hearing that, Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan, Jr.
Robert Mylan, Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we'll jump right into our agenda item. It's one agenda item today, Board, but it is a heavy one, and one that we will continue to have our budget conversations. As you recall, at our last couple of board meetings, staff have come to us with information about our budget. We had a meeting with the principals regarding their needs assessments and had a really good conversation, an initial conversation discussion with them as well. So, in front of you on your agenda is the presentation from the last board meeting regarding the budget. So, hopefully, you all had a chance to review that. Really, the purpose of today's meeting, as was outlined previously, and then I'll let Dr. Stubblefield share any additional information if necessary. But today, Board, staff, administration, and leadership have asked us for guidance on which direction we want to continue to pursue with our budget. If you recall, at our last board meeting, specifically on Slide 10 of the slide deck that you have, there were three different scenarios that were laid out for us to consider, and this would help give leadership guidance on which direction to continue working through the budget, the building budgets, the department budgets, really stemming also from the ESER dollars that are no longer going to be available for us, and looking at where those dollars will be coming from. So, there were three scenarios that were in front of us. Staff is recommending Scenario 1, but it is incumbent on this Board to figure out which direction we want to go with continuing the budget conversations. So, today is an opportunity for us to have conversation around this, to ask questions around how we continue with our budget. Additionally, at our board meeting on March 26th, we will have another opportunity to speak with the principals or a designated staff person from that building regarding their building needs assessment. So, if there's additional information that we need regarding those assessments or what's going on with those assessments, now would be an appropriate time also to ask for clarifying question or questions or additional information. And then, as we start working through the rest of the budget, again, this is just the start of our conversations with the budget, what additional information do we as a board need so that we can continue these proceedings and these conversations? So, with that, I'll pause. Again, today really would be, staff is asking from us to give guidance on those three scenarios that you'll see on Slide 10 in your slide deck. But with that, I'll ask Dr. Stubblefield, if there's anything else that you want to share?
The only other thing that will be helpful for us is we have the timeline on Slide 11, and that, if there are any things that we need to adjust, we do have a finance committee meeting this Friday to what we had to adjust due to spring break. In the regular board meeting, we plan to talk about the budget. And there is another finance committee. The finance committee meetings are set, but if we are bringing things back to the full board, whether there will be additional special meetings or if we need to adjust what we already have planned for the future April meeting, so that it's not so many things, that will be helpful for us to know as well.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. So, with that, I'll, again, just open up to the floor for the Board with questions for staff or just conversation around our budget, our priorities, and the scenarios. Yes, Dr. Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. And, again, to share with the Board, I've already shared it before, the Finance Committee plans to take a deep dive into department budgets to have a conversation on top priorities and maybe just software requests. So, I would like to ask for an explanation of Number 1 scenario, because I understand 2 and I understand 3, but I don't understand 1 as a standalone.
1 as a standalone was placed there based off of conversations we've had over the course of the year of if we were to reduce the budget by a certain percentage, what would it be? And we picked 3% because what it does include, it can include, is reducing the budget by 1 mil and as well as addressing the continuation of the things from ESER. And also, it gives some, another additional if the Board was trying to do something different towards contingency or reduce the budget, because that, the general topic of reducing the budget has come up. So, that's where 3 kind of came from.
No, no, no. Okay, so, thank you. So, that actually clarifies more than what I understood Mr. Lopez saying. So, actually, if one could, if one would say the Board chose Scenario 3, it could very well include Scenario 1.
Yes.
Okay, so, that's the confusion, Mr. Lopez. I heard mistakenly, obviously, that it was either 1 or 2 or 3, but it could be 3 as the floor and include 1.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
And, and I'm not, like, trying to add confusion, but if the Board decided here it was another scenario, we just need to know what the scenario is so that we can plan. And Greg can speak to this. Depending on the scenario, where the, to get to 10 million, that's going to impact, all of them impact staffing, to be transparent, because there are positions that are solely funded out of the ESER fund, and people were aware that they would, those positions would end when the ESER funds ended. But all of these scenarios would impact staffing in a different way, and we would want to make sure that we can, A, put people in positions that we have open that are needed or give them that opportunity or give them ample opportunity and notice prior to the end of the year. But in Scenario 1, staff that, when we hired them, they knew certain positions would not continue because they were directly related to COVID and that kind of thing. So, they've been notified, they've been aware. If there are opportunities to move them into other positions, those things are already happening. So, minimumly, that we, that helps us to navigate with individuals who may be impacted.
Clarifying question, Dr. Stubblefield, and then Ms. Russell, just on, and then Dr. Nguyen.
Was he supposed to answer you?
No, I was saying Greg may be able to weigh in about, like, if it impacts certified staff, like, notification and that kind of.
Yeah, so, if you're going to make staffing decisions, the technical date is May, but you really need to make that decision in April so that notifications can go out. So, you can't delay that past March, really.
And certified positions would be administrators, teachers, anybody covered under the negotiated agreement. And all administrators are covered under the Continuing Contracting Act. So, it's that group.
And if I could, Mr.?
Yeah, please.
That is one scenario, because it doesn't automatically have to impact staff. So, I just wanted you to include that conversation.
Yes, but the Number 1 does.
Right. And that then leads to the other kind of segue is that these were administrations' choices of deleting certain things from ESER funds. But have we, we've seen, we only got one, I'll just call it spreadsheet, with all the ESER funds, and perhaps there could be, just suggesting the bigger picture, reduction of ESER funds that do not impact staff, correct?
Not technically, because some of them were, like, testers, people who were doing COVID tests. We don't do that anymore. There were positions, and I'm like.
Right, without the spreadsheet. So, you're saying all ESER funds equal staff?
No, I said some of it impact staff. So, some of, it's like those things that were directly correlated to, yeah.
Especially to COVID.
Yes. And then there were some additional positions that we added, like student support positions. But we, in those cases, we didn't necessarily fill all our instructional aid positions. So, those people can slide into those positions and/or if they, if they want to or those kind of things. So, it was specific positions around that. So, one other one was like the position of Director of Health Services. We have adjusted the budget, they've adjusted the budget in Student Services and Health Services to continue that position. And there was a couple other Health Service positions that sped, and Student Services are split in the cost. So, but solely paying for them out of ESER funds. Yeah, yeah.
Impugn your, this is the newest thing, impugn your motives or your integrity. I'm just saying, let's put everything out there on the table, because the manner in which it was framed, if what it sounded like, cut ESER funds, cut staff, well, that's not.
No, and I apologize if that's how it was received. No.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then one clarification, and then Ms. Russell, I saw you had your hand up as well. So, Dr. Stubblefield, obviously, 2 and 3 are reductions in the budget. Is 1, am I reading that that's all, that is not necessarily a reduction of $2 million? That's if we want to, that's a recommendation of continuing those items from Slide 8, which add up to the $2,445,110. So, that's, that's not saying to decrease by the 2 million?
All of those should have a negative sign, because we have to, like, we have to make adjustments. So, if we do Number 1, and I'm looking to Ms. Kaiser and Mr. Lilly, we would reduce budgets if we just did a unilateral department budget or in general by 0.5% to cover that, or is it 1%? By 1% to cover those things.
Make up the 2 million.
Right. And what that looks like across the Board, it's more like staffing or salaries or that kind of thing, that because of the two-year contract, that has been taken care of. But it may mean that you are reducing, like, your operational size. When we looked at it generically, it does impact budgets, but is not to the point where people can't continue to focus on the board priorities and the things that are prioritized. So, what that looks like for each department, in some departments, it would not impact because their budgets were already, so like, we're adding money to instructional resources, so we're not going to take it away to add it back, right? Like, during, with COVID, we pay for a lot of curriculum and stuff. So, we needed to make sure that we can continue those rotations and make sure that we have the correct curriculum resources.
Okay, so, all of these three scenarios, and obviously, there are other scenarios the Board could decide on, but of these three, those are, we would have to look for within our budgets, decreased budgets, department budgets, to find the 2 million if we wanted to continue those items listed on Slide 8 that are currently paid out of ESER dollars.
Correct.
Okay, that's what, now I'm tracking. Thank you. Ms. Russell?
Yeah. Thank you both for those clarifying. I think I am, I think I also heard what Dr. Nguyen heard, and I have noted that I want to clarify that reducing a budget, and I continually want to clarify that reducing the overall budget by 3% equalling about 11 million, that we're saying that there are no expenses outside of personnel that cannot be evaluated for that purpose, because that is literally what I heard. But I also want to clarify, we keep talking about Health Services when we talk about ESER, and I, my understanding, a year ago in this process, when we went through budgets, we also looked at the KDHE grants, we also, Health Services was already cut out of the budget from those pieces. And so, what I also remember in the, I want to say Quarter 3 ESER report, was most of those things were curriculum expenses, they were technology expenses. And so, I'm struggling in my mind to figure out where the 2.445 wasn't figured out last year. We have an influx of 6 point or anticipated of 6.6, but we're saying we still don't have the dollars to figure it out. But we've, I am kind of a little bit all over the place with where we are because the numbers aren't mathing for me, and so I'm struggling to follow along because I see an increase, but then we chose to do certain things with the increase. But then we're saying we don't have money for some things, but they're related to personnel. But the last expenses that I saw in the last couple of ARPA or ESER things were all primarily not personnel-oriented. So, I'm just struggling, but I also am trying to figure out how to get us to a decision.
Right. So, I will try to explain this, and then Mr. Lilly or anyone can join in. So, first, I wasn't saying exclusively staff. I'm saying you can't get there without impacting staff. Our first line would be not to impact staff, but you can't get to 10 million dollars. So, there will be other things that definitely happen, but in addition to that, that it would impact staff. That's just the reality. When you look at 51% of our budget goes to salaries, so you can't get that. So, I'm saying it's an add.
But I could also get that we have a high rate of vacancies too, for dollars we've never actually spent in the last two years.
Correct. Well, that's not actually true. Most of our vacancy, we are filling with staffing agency. So, it may be those positions that, it may not impact, like, physical person, but it will impact the staffing FTE, because we, you could decide we're not filling any of these open positions. So, when I generically say that, I just want to clarify, it will impact our overall staffing. It does not necessarily mean it'll impact a bunch of people. I don't want people to, but it will impact some people. I just want to be transparent about that. All of those positions from teaching to food service to all of the things that we use staffing agency for, that money is just not actually, is not like just sitting there in the pile.
Those people, and I just want to be clear, and I want to make sure we're all on the same page, some people have been doing the jobs that agencies have been unable to fill anyway, so they've essentially already been doing those roles in some of these scenarios.
That, that is, both things are true. Yeah. So, it's a combination. It's not, yeah.
They have to reduce their job to a different job. They could still stay in the same position, doing the same thing, but they may have to encumber other things, because now we would be saying these dollars aren't available to fund these positions. It's not like this, oh, I'm here, and if we cut the budget, you got to come all the way down here, because the Board said that wasn't.
No, and I, and that's not, I was, I was just generically saying, being transparent, it will impact how we do business as well as staff in every scenario. Like, there are people in programs and how we operate, like, from mills.
But there are also ineffective programs, correct?
They're, I mean, yeah. If you, I mean, there are things that you would have to say, like, it depends on who you talk. I mean, I don't want to generically say that. There are things that we, we just have to make tough choices in all of the scenarios.
Well, I want to make tough choices, and I apologize. I want to make tough choices based on outcomes and ineffective programs that we continue to put dollars into. That is where I personally am, and I hope that we can get to a point, and I, and I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just want to real quickly say that I think my other two questions that I had are around with Finance Committee and them reviewing department budgets. I would like to see a recap of kind of what, what that looks like, what they are finding, because I think that's important. I also think the impact based on whether or not reducing or keeping things the same as it relates to the bond are two conversations that we also should be having, because I think both of those things have merit in this conversation. So, it is hard for me today to look at these options and say, I know which direction we should go, not knowing what needs there are or what, what things maybe we really should be reducing, but also the impact of our bill levy. And so, I will be quiet, but I wanted to get those things in my mind.
So, and then I'll go back to your question about, like, the, how we got to this number. If you scroll up to Slide 7, or if you go to Slide 7, it shows we got, we will, if nothing changes, because that's another thing that we don't know or can't control, you know, until the legislative session is closed, but we're operating based off of if all things stay the same. If that changes, we have to pivot anyway, but we can't not, you know, most school districts move forward and then make adjustments as necessary. The salary increase component was decided when the two-year contract was decided. So, that's covering all employee groups. The health insurance, the cost of health insurance goes up every year, and this is what it goes up. So, unless we're not. So unless we're not providing health insurance at the level that we do now, that, that's the number. The worker compensation funding, that we have to do. So that, with the new money, that's what was left, 1.12 million dollars. So then when you go down to based off of board priorities from last year, and we talked at the last meeting, if the board wanted to shift from that, then we will shift. These were the things that we are saying we will continue in, in some ways, not in some ways, during, while we were using our Esser dollars, these things were paid for solely out of the Esser dollars. And this is the cost difference, and that's how you get to the negative 2.4 million. And then when you scroll down, these are the things that we, in departments, in the, the elementary teachers spoke about, like, the benefit of having the specials in a way where they can have common plan times and then sometimes in some buildings that allow for additional intervention. So that was one thing based off of the surveys that we sent out and said, here are the things that we're, it wasn't just administration, it was staff and others who weighed in on these things. So then the behavior contractors that were paid through SPED, SPED has, went into their budget in that having the RBTs and those people out there to support the staff in the building when behaviors come up, they've built that into their budget. But during COVID, because so many students were experiencing behaviors, we, that was spent on that, but now in that sense, SPED has built that into their budget. $275,000 for the Kids Zone expansion, the 21st Century Grant, and other components pay for that. But that is one of those things, when we look at, like, the needs for our families before and after school, if we have to supplement that, historically, we have done that, and our goal has been to expand it so that we don't have to tell a family, no, your child can't come before or after school. The reading interventions teachers, that is something, when you look at their federal dollars or their title dollars or their building budgets, that most of them that have them will continue that, and that's the cost. So that's why that's not wrapped into that component of the negative two. So that's how we got to the scenarios. That's where the numbers came from regarding those components.
Good.
I appreciate that. I will say, I have concerns around some of the continuations. This is not a secret. I have not, uh, not been honest about my concerns about the Welcome Center costs, the technology cost, and the continued curriculum cost. Those are things that I think should be continually evaluated. We haven't seen an update to the curriculum theory of how, how we were re-processing books and doing all of that. I thought that was the last time the board received an update. I think it was like three, maybe four years ago, that had the map that said, this is the curriculum refresh. We gave a lot of dollars to curriculum during Esser. And so my argument is, is that I think there may be other things, and while curriculum is important and valued, I also, I am not sure I'm understanding what we, that is the department that always gets an increase in dollars, but that is not the only need we have as it relates to academic achievement. And so, those are the three areas of concern and pause for me. I have said it, I don't know how.
So, and I, so can I explain what those things are? Because I think your concerns and questions are valid, and we can provide that information. The $2 million in curriculum, you have to remember, I was not here. There had not been curriculum purchased district-wide in about 10 years, is what I remember that was stated at that particular board meeting. When you look at districts our size and just base curriculum, and we've heard from the community, like, we don't have books, this is not consistent, those kinds of things, our budget, our just regular instructional resources budget is like a million dollars. When you compare us to, and I'm just being transparent, I only can speak to mine. Lawrence has half the number of kids that we have, and their budget is over a million dollars. For just the cycle of books and resources, and whether it's online or those kind of things, you have to have a budget if you're going to have the things that our community is saying does not exist. That's what that is. That's not necessarily a specific program or whatever. It is the core base curriculum, where we're saying all kids would have access to I-ready math in K through five. If we don't do that, we don't, we will not be able to say that, and then you will go back to individual schools or teachers or whomever doing what they please. So that, and I know the curriculum is more complex, so we can provide that. The technology is, remember, we went.
Before you move on, I just want to be clear, that curriculum does not equal the ability to facilitate and to make, ensure that that improves student achievement. And so I just want to be clear that just by saying, oh, I don't want to put 2 million in curriculum, that's not saying I don't want our kids to have books. It's not saying that we don't have the fundamentals, because I just want to be cautious with words. We do have the fundamentals in our buildings. We have the technology and the resources to get us there. But just because we don't put 2 million in curriculum, or we do put 2 million in curriculum, doesn't equal student achievement.
No, you're absolutely correct. No, you're absolutely correct. That's just foundational. Like, these are foundational things. Same with the technology. We went one-to-one with connected iPads. We have to continue to be able to have the, at the high school, we're evaluating, like, what to do with that. This is to get us to, to be able to maintain and replace long-term in the budget. It's not like, we're, so it's not, so I think what you're saying and what I am saying is the same things, but this is just foundational. And if we don't have the foundation, we won't be able to evaluate and get to what you're saying around the outcomes. And that's where we are, is bringing those things forward so that we can say, this is, like, when we implemented this curriculum, here was the outcome. Like, if the outcome doesn't match up, it doesn't mean we can't have a curriculum. It means we need to evaluate what our core curriculum is around that. And so that, that's what these numbers are. There's not, like, now we want to go and do the other things. The MTSS and Canvas, we have to have a learning management system, so we have to continue that. And down the road, whether, whether that says Canvas or whatever, it should just say learning management system, because you have to have that in place. So those things here, and as far as, like, the dual-language programs in the Welcome Center, that is what it costs to run it. Now, what happens within those programs, like, if the outcomes or we want to see a shift, in order to see a shift, you have to have the facility to do it. So those two things coincide. I don't think, I think you're not, I mean, I, what I hear you saying is, we want these things, but I need to, we need to evaluate the programs and the outcomes to determine if those are the right things within that. And it may, in some ways, impact the bottom line, but we're just saying for what we have now, this is what it costs. It would not prevent you from shifting or reducing or changing now or in the future. But if you, if we want to say this is the Welcome Center, this is, these are the baseline that, that's what those numbers are.
Okay, Mr. Lopez.
Yes, Ms. Page.
Thank you. I think it was in February, and I'll be corrected if I'm wrong. I attended the Student Service Workshop, and in that workshop, they stated that 52% of our kids required some kind of health services. So I have three questions for the SPED Department and our Health Service Department. One, which option will allow us to be in compliance with 504s and IEP plans? Second, what are the safety hazards of each plan? And then thirdly, what are we, what are we mandated to do by law in regard to nursing and what we require, what the state mandates for our kids? Because if we want to get our accreditation back, attendance was a part of that. You got to have healthy kids, and I've heard you say repeatedly, how are the kids? So I'm concerned about the health part, and if we could get someone from Health Services and SPED to answer those, that'd help me understand which way to go.
So Ms. Lewis can probably tell you what is required by the state. All of these scenarios address the things that you're saying. All of these scenarios address, that's, so you, you saw, like, in the SPED component, like, they have already planned for the $2 million in behavior contracts and those kind of things. So all of these scenarios address the questions that you have there. As far as the nursing and Health Service, the nurse, the Health Service Department budget is 5.2 million dollars. If we, if you take the average salary of, of how we figure the average salary to have a nurse in each building, it's about 2.8 million dollars. Our challenge has been that we've not been able to hire directly in some cases, so that throws us out of whack. And that, that component, we can tell you, last year, the nursing budget, and I'm looking to the finance people, went over, not the nursing, Health Service overall, because nursing is one component of what they do across the board. They went over around 670-something thousand dollars last year based off of just the needs that came up. And so our budget allows for what you are talking about. We are just competing with the shortage of nurses across all fields. And Ms. Lewis, if I misspoke, you can share off of your perspective. What is mandated by the state? I don't want to misspeak as far as what is required, but we meet the state requirements as far as how we allocate our budget for that. What, and then Greg can weigh into this, specifically around paying nurses and doing that. And Ms. Paige, and I'm not, like, trying to be disrespectful. That's just a separate conversation because they're covered under the master agreement. So if we're talking about Health Services and Nursing today, it's around the budget, not necessarily around salary, because that creates some challenges for the table.
I didn't ask that.
No, I was just.
Okay, no, no, I, I hear what you, I know what we're here for, but I'm very concerned about that. That's a whole nother issue.
Yeah.
I'd like some answers to that question.
Yeah.
Good morning, Board President Lopez, Vice President Drew, Dr. Stubblefield, and board. I think the question you're asking for me to answer is, what are we required to do by the Kansas statute?
Yes.
So Kansas has a statute that delegation of rights has to be done by an MD, a DO, or an RN. That is how we are able to hire LPNs and Health Office Assistants in the district. Currently, there are 31-ish LPNs through agency and Health Office Assistant. For district staff, we have three LPNs on-staff district and seven HOA, which is about 10. Those typically go under my license, because I'm the RN, is the Director of Health Services. So meaning, I have to check on them, I have to sign them off, I have to make sure that they keep their credentials up. If they are deemed with the state violation, it goes back to me as well. In some of our buildings, we've put our LPNs because the acuity has been lower, so we're under the state statute. Where, where that comes into play and where it gets tricky is if we try to delegate these tasks to staff, like teachers or building administrators, I could not support that, because then they will be directly tied to my license.
And.
Currently, we do not do that.
Yes, I was going to say, we have not done that since Ms. Lewis has been in, I, I mean, I'm just speaking. For, we have not delegated it outside of anyone that she's described to since.
Since I've been here, since 21.
Correct, yeah.
October of 21.
So we, we will be in compliance with these three plans?
I mean, our biggest thing, and I don't know which plan is best for you, is recruit, recruiting and retaining nurses. We do not calculate nurses' years of experience, and that is something that Dom and I have talked about. We try to put them in the cap, in the bottle with teachers, and that's just different. Most nurses don't work Monday through Friday, nine-to-five job. They work PRN jobs, because that's how they get more bang for their buck, if they work 312s at several different facilities. So they could have 10 years of PRN experience, but we've just not been able to completely agree on how to calculate that. And I've met with HR, I've met with Dr. Stubblefield, I've met with Dr. Wilson, and we're working on that internally, so I think that's our Achilles' heel. And then how they're captured on that salary scale, some of them is very, very low if we're basing it a nursing salary on a teacher's salary. And, and that is something Dom and I are talking about.
And that's the part that I'm saying has to be at the table. So I just want to be, like, I don't want, and Greg, you can tell us legally. Like, that's what I'm saying, we can't do here.
I understood that. No, I was just saying, I understood that. But I just wanted to know, what were the requirements from the state? Because in our, and, and prior to you, I've been there when the, when the head secretary for the, for the principal and whoever passed out pills, and we don't want to do that. I didn't say or imply that's what we were doing. But when you start cutting, let's make sure we do what we need to do for these kids. Because you're showing the stuff, but I'd like to see more detail. Because if I'm a vote for something, I want to know, what are we doing? And if somebody asks me a question, I can answer it. Because we're saying, in one, what the amount, I get that. But I'd like to know all the detail under that. So that way, when asked a question, I can answer it correctly and know what I'm talking about. But I am concerned, because they get a budget every year, but they have to spend so much money going to agency. That's a problem. And then they're, then it said, well, they went over their budget. Well, of course, they're going to go over their budget, because of what they have to do. So we have to keep all that in mind, because we're using a lot of agencies. I get it. But then you can't say, oh, you're over. Yeah, she's going to, and that's going to be a continuing problem until we rectify it.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So I think the detail, we can't do the detail until we know the direction. What we're saying to you is, each one of these scenarios means a reduction in the budget, so you have to go deeper. And that's where we would, when we're looking at department and building budgets, say, based off of these things, here is our recommendation. And then that's when you would be like, yes to this, no to this, have you considered this? But we can't do that without direction, if that makes sense. Like, if we had come with all of these things, one of the things, just to be transparent, when you start to put those things out there and it's not necessarily decided, it's caused unnecessary angst amongst staff, and then people start to make assumptions, and they make different decisions. And then you run into scenarios where people have taken jobs in other places and because they don't think they're going to have a job, and then we are like, no, 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 we're keeping that. So that's why we had, don't have a list of, here is this, because, one, it needs to align to your priorities, and ultimately, you would decide. But before we can even start to do that, we would need to know the direction so that we can put together the options. And so, I, and I, I hear you, it makes completely sense, complete sense, but we didn't, I didn't want us to put the cart before the horse and make assumptions and cause unnecessary angst if, depending on the scenario. So that's why we're here today.
I respect that, but for us, what, we need to know, when we come to that, all the details, before we vote on anything. Because to give a blank, I've been at schools where we voted on a blank check, and we ended up getting screwed. I'm just saying, let's put it out there, whenever we, when it comes to us, it need to be detailed. And not just, oh, one, two, or three, or what's under one, two, and three.
So it gets worse in each scenario. That, that's where I was just trying to be transparent. So currently, out of Esser, we have 20 people who are solely funded by Esser. Just to wrap back around to that, it's three administration, five teachers, five classified, early childhood, and seven instructional aides. So those, most of those individuals in. So those, most of those individuals in scenario one will probably have some job in some capacity here because of our openings. But when you go to scenario two, three, or another scenario where the number is larger than that, you are either like, it, it impacts, it, all of this will impact how we do business operationally. So those things just grow when the number is growing. We have not looked at like specifically, is this or that? I'm just saying baseline, that, that's just how math works, right? Like, so we don't want to, I don't want to like cause angst unnecessarily if, for all of these things, because people look at it and out of context, if you just see this online or somebody misunderstood, or I may say something in what they hear versus what I intended to say, hence cause confusion for individuals.
But then in the real world, let's be real. If, if you have X amount of dollars and you don't have what you used to have, somebody may have to take a cut. It's just the real world. Let's not.
Absolutely.
And I understand what you're trying to do, but let's be real about it. There may be some cuts.
Absolutely.
Some people may not come back. That's just the reality. That's the real world. And, and let's not get it out of skew. It's real. And this is the times that we live in.
Ms. Page, I think what she's saying too, though, was.
I understood everything she said. I'm just saying, I was giving my opinion. I heard every word. I don't need an interpreter.
Well, I'm going to say for myself that we don't want to, we don't want to put our staff in a bad position because, because we are in the real world. If I think my job is at risk, then I will, I could potentially become a flight risk. So I completed that sentence for myself.
So, and I think what I'm hearing, and I, and I totally get right. Like, we, this isn't the only time we will make a decision. Like, whatever we decide, if we decide anything, we may not today. But I think what, what I'm hearing is, we want to hear a little bit more of the detail, right? What are the implications of scenario one, two, three, four, five, whatever they are? And see how that's, how that impacts our overall budget, the departments. But what I'm understanding is that staff is asking for some guidance on, is there a direction that the board is asking? And then they'll come back and say, hey, based on scenario two, this is what it potentially could mean in each of the departments, and here's how much we're having to reduce, and here's what it could look like. Then we as a board would take that, review it, and say, you know, offer feedback or questions on that. So I think it's, so I, I want to be clear. I don't think today, I'm not asking, I don't think today is where we're deciding like a final, hey, this is, this is it, and we won't see anything else anymore. I think today is really, can we give some guidance to our, the Dr. Stubblefield and her team on which direction? And then they can come back and provide some of that detail, I think, that we're asking for of like, what does it mean when we're saying reduced by 1 mil? Where is that coming from so we can see more of the detail? Is that what, what I'm hearing, Dr.? I don't want to, I, I mean, I just want to make sure I'm not misspeaking. But I don't think, what I'm thinking is that we're going to see this again.
Correct.
And how it's impacting each of these budgets and the, each of the departments and the overall budget by the 10 million, or the 6 million, or the 2 million. So, so to be clear, we're going to see this, the detailed information on what this means.
Yes, yes, and so minimumly, what we will do, because we have to plan for the next school year, minimumly, unless you tell us differently, we will plan for what's in scenario one, because scenario one is in scenario two and it's in scenario three. If the board's direction was to go to two or three, that's different for us. Or if you're like, we don't want none of that stuff that's in scenario one, then we plan differently there as well, right? Like, if, if you are like, we're not continuing any of these things. And I'm just, I'm saying extreme, so minimumly, we will plan for scenario one unless you tell us differently. But if you're, if you all were in the space, and if you're not, I get it, respect it. If you're like, we're not in the space, we don't want to pick one of these scenarios, go ahead and give us the detail of scenario one, and that'll let us know if we need to do scenario two or scenario three. We can provide that detailed information of, here's how we as staff, as administration, would recommend to get to scenario one. You may disagree and say, do something different, and you have that right. Then we would pivot. I'm only saying, in this timeframe, when we are not certain, it impacts individuals in departments differently as you move down that timeline of who will it impact? Because certified staff is protected under state statute with notification and those kind of things. So if you're like, we don't need, and I'm not saying any positions, because we don't, let's get, but if you've missed that deadline, we can't do that. So you're locked into that. So that's all that I'm laying out. So we can come back, like, if you're not in the space of, we don't want to pick any other scenarios today, we can come back pretty fairly quickly and say, here's our recommendation. I mean, here's what we would say, how we can get to this. And then you can have a discussion around, like, why did you pick this or do this? But we have to start somewhere. And that's where we are now, because we have to plan for the budgets. They, we have to have department budget meetings. We have the principal meetings already, like, they have to hire teachers, they have to hire, know what, support staff. Like, this is the season for that. And so that's how we will operate. And you can, we can bring back detailed scenario of, this is how you would get to, this is how we would say that. But ultimately, the board can say, nope, try something else, or we want you to look at X.
So I can only speak for myself 100%. I like number one when we look at, when we talk through it. And I understand high level having to have some direction, because if not, you're going to spend hours just coming up with one of statements. So again, I'm speaking for Yolanda Clark only. I'm looking at number one, and that's what, that's when I look at our options, even outside of the options that could be created, that's what I would recommend.
Yes, Dr. Win.
And since we're speaking for ourselves. And, and once again, angst is, is something that we all are going through. Because if we sit here and say, as I am going to say, there will be throughout the airwaves, well, Dr. Win wants to fire everybody, okay? Nevertheless, it goes back to what we've done previous to this date. And we are at this date because we did not dig into these topics prior to this date, in my opinion. Now, to segue to your question, Ms. Russell, because of spring break, we did not meet on the 15th. And the Finance Committee before had these items on the agenda. So we weren't, we were not able to unravel, peel back, because we got this, you know, this is the second time all of us have looked at it in depth, all right. But the, the challenge, and I, and I asked of the two other members of the Finance Committee, either they, if they're, they did not have the ability or unwilling to dig into department, then I would ask that they sub somebody else out. Because that's, in my opinion, the only way we know. And, and without a clear definition of impact, budgets impact everybody. I think that's the, the last statement you made. I mean, if we take a penny out, it's going to impact somebody. But nevertheless, all they say, what, I want scenario one and scenario three. Because out of a $500 million or $400 million budget, I'm going to use, throw this back to Ms. Russell, 11 million is not much. Da-da.
We went from five to 11 now.
Yeah, hey.
Come a long way.
When you're talking about millions, it's nothing. But, but again, without no, you know, we're, I don't believe anybody's going to sit up here and go, oh, we, we don't want to expand kids zone. No. But when it says it's paid through grants, okay, is that within the budget we're, we're adding, or is it not? And then when you, Dr. Stubblefield said, in, in response to Ms. Brownlee Page comment, we're talking about salary. When you're going to say the 3.5 is a salary cost. We have a master contract that dealt with the, the master contract. But does this include staff who is not under contract?
That scenario, I'm not, Ms. Kaiser, do we include classified and administrators in that? I think typically we, like, based off of what was given last year, that would be the number. Now, outside of the master contract, the board would have flexibility for the other two groups. We were putting what it would cost for all groups based off of what was done last year. So we told that it would be in that scenario. But what happens with those other two groups, you would have that. But I just want to confirm, I know historically, when we've given that number, we have included all three groups, and then the board can make a decision.
Right, so we don't, well, do I, do, is she going to answer, or do I just want to go ahead?
She's, I think she's looking it up, and then she'll come back, but you can.
The point is, we don't know what that 3.5 includes outside of the master contract. You haven't shared that with us. Other than it's just the same? So all I'm saying is that.
Yeah, no, I hear you, yeah, yeah. We'll get it to you, yeah.
Mr. Lopez, I'm, I'll tell you, I, I want one and three. That's not an option. Excuse me. But that, you know, if, if we're going to do this now, we, we're, we're in this, this season. But we've, we have a lot more responsibility than to just take the numbers and without knowing what the numbers are. But to answer your question, come Friday, we're going to start, hopefully, I don't know what the sponsor of administration is from our, just for example, for the template of, of how we're going to deal with departments. Dr. Stubblefield and I haven't had a conversation, so I don't know how the data is going to come to the Finance Committee.
We have the depart, I mean, we have like, which you all have, the department.
Three scenarios, so we have.
You have the three scenarios, but we also have from last year, like, what the department budgets were. Have we built, we haven't built out department budgets this year. So we have like last year what they were. We have that information, can have that available.
The one document, we do have a document that I hope everyone does, has time to. I understand there's a conflict now all of a sudden about the Finance Committee time. But we do have a document that has each department and the 3% deduction.
Yes.
So we do have that document. So we have a document. There's a, there's a meeting that Ms. Drew and Ms. Brownlee Page are having, that conflicts with the, with the Finance Committee. Nevertheless, so we do have some more data that.
And, and Dr. Win, we also, which you, in the board docs, last year, all of the department budgets, like, what they were last year and the breakdown for, we have that information as well. So we can make sure, I think it's, it's in the library, but we could work with Ms. Smith to attach that, because then you could see the, so you have all of that information. And if, then we could look at, which my, my recommendation would not to be to go in alphabetical order, but to look at like the larger, like, the budgets of departments that have, would have a greater impact, like, dollar-wise, like, so, so we can talk about who we need to.
Are they in the order of that document? I mean, is that what you're saying?
I don't know what the.
Whatever, what, a 3% cut is a 3% cut. No matter where, if it's at the top of the list, middle of the, bottom of the list.
Right, right.
So that, so for the scenario number three, I would have suggested, Mr. Lopez, that that document had been included or people can, directed to it. So you can see, can we access the document now?
If it's on the board library, you can. From the last Finance Committee, any agenda items would be out there and you could access it. The department from, the department budgets from last year are in there somewhere, so you can access all of those documents. But we can put it in one, have Ms. Smith put it in one place.
So anyway, scenario number three, there is a breakdown right now at 10:01. And you can see, what, a 3% reduction of a budget of, of primarily the departments. I'm not sure if, if this, at the bottom of the schools. But the amount. And one would say then, at that point, you have a better, more informed understanding of what 3% looks like. Because it's just a figure. It has not taken from travel. It didn't take away any, any salaries. It just took a, a 3% cut.
Right.
Off the total amount.
Right, and then just to add on to what Dr. Win is saying, from that, the department could go back and say, well, we're going to reduce travel, we're going to reduce this, that, or another.
Paperclips.
Yeah. And so then they can come back and say, in order for us to meet the board goals or do whatever, these, this is how we'll get to that number. The board would have that information. And then, because if the department or the people who are impacted are saying it, then you, they can offer that up. Because that's what we would do, you know, like, if I'm like, Anna, you have to reduce your bu- budget by $1,000. And I say, well, I want to give up this. And this is the impact versus me trying to tell operations what they should get rid of. Because I don't, while I think I know, I don't necessarily know the impact. But it also offers space for me to ask questions like, well, did you consider X? And they can tell you, yeah, and this, that, or another, so.
Because that was my, my unwillingness to accept your statement. Because if you took the 10 million out and the budget had, well, the department made those decisions, one would not say, they would just cut salaries first. That that, they would automatically cut paperclips and X and Y, those non, quote, non-essentials.
For, for some. Some would, because.
To make bigger, uh, different decisions.
Yeah, and for some, they may have a position. Right, but they may have a position that they're saying, we can combine these two, or haven't been able to. So I just, I, I wasn't saying automatically. I was just saying on the other side, it would impact staff to get to 10 million. But not to, I just want to be transparent, because I didn't want people to say, well, we didn't say that. Like, it would impact business, operation of business, like, travel, paperclips, and those kind of things. And impact some positions as well, yeah.
Ms. Drew, did you have your hand up, Ms. Drew?
Just, again, just after listening to everything and understanding very clearly that I am going to be supporting scenario number one, that's all. Thank you.
Ms. Russell?
Okay, I think I have got my, my thoughts together somewhat. And I appreciate the additional context from all the board members. So I think where I kind of am landing is similar to option three. But option one, and I, kind of the basis of my thoughts are, I do need to dive into the needs assessments. I don't think I have a clear understanding of the increased budget needs at the building level based on the budget needs assessments. A couple of years ago, we had a document that like laid it all out and said like, oh, yes to these positions, no to this. And so I think that's where my question around that is. But also, as we've talked about needing to build in staff supplies, I want to be cognizant that some of these things that we also said we're sending back to the schools, that it also allows them to still make room in their budget for the things, the direction that we've already said. Yes, we're going to pay for supplies, each department, each staff member will have that. But if we're putting 577,000 back in the schools, we're taking 578 out of Title I, I just want to make sure that those things are all working in tandem together. Because at some point, they're not going to have any additional dollars to do something. And so is that taken into consideration? I think the conversation, based on the conversations we've had today, and when I do the numbers, while we keep seeing or discussing this 2.5 is a salary cost, and when I do the numbers, while we keep seeing or discussing this 2.445, there is a 1.1 in the anticipated additional funds that isn't spent. So my math is telling me we have 1.3 is what we would have to cover out of the bind in the budget somewhere for the ESSER dollars. However, going back to a conversation we had last year around anticipated overages for departments, so if, and I don't want to use the, some of the budgets have more money than they actually need, and so have we looked at that comparison to where we are today? And if there is a percentage of dollars that will make up that 1.3 million dollars that we can't find for continuation, that's that conversation. My last thing I wanted to say is around department budgets, which I'm going to keep harping on, because I haven't seen them and I don't, I really want us, I am not a fan of, whether it's equity, equality, whatever you want to say, I'm not a fan of saying we're going to cut budgets across the board 1%, because I think there are budgets, or there are areas of focus. I'm advocating personally, based off of conversations with both board, but also community members, that health services, dual language, or the multilingual department, fine arts and athletics, those budgets need to be looked at from a place of equity across buildings, but also equity across the thing that's going to trigger that student achievement for our students. Because if we're not having that conversation, then some of our students are never going to get there, because they have no reason to come to school. And so there is a smaller pool of those folks, but there are also huge needs that we have when we talk about 51% needing additional services, when we talk about 60% of our district being bilingual. Like, those are areas where we cannot continue to be advocating. I said it 20 minutes ago, I'm going to say it again, the ones that I will be interested in and really looking at in the finance committee, the curriculum, what is our refresher guide? What is our plan? The welcome center, let's continue to talk about outcomes as it refers not just to the welcome center, but faces and family engagement and all of those things. We've created a policy, how are we going to implement that policy with fidelity if we are not having those conversations around those student supports? And then technology, does it need it? That is a conversation I continually have, the board has continually approved things, things have been brought to us, and it has been said, oh, we have this in our budget. Well, we didn't budget for it, so, but we have always had money in our budget to do technology things that weren't warranted 20, in July of last year, so why are we saying we need to put 300,000 more dollars in budget? So, that is my spiel, that is where I am. I'm happy to follow up in an email with all of my questions and thoughts. But yes, that is where I am, three with number one as well.
Okay, and I can respond to a couple of them, but Ms. Kaiser is going to answer Dr. Nguyen's question, correct?
Yes, the, the salary cost increase of 3. almost 6 million is just staff covered under negotiated agreement that the board's already committed to, that does not include any other salary increases.
So it did not include the other employee groups?
Correct.
I misspoke, okay.
And, and I did want to clarify also, we did, I believe, a couple of weeks ago, sent out in the Friday notice, the Friday weekly update, that there was a list of all the department budgets and what it would look like if we had the 1%, 1 mil, and 3% just across the board. So I think that information was in your Friday update.
Yeah, and so, to clarify, Ms. Russell, while it was just showing you high level, this is what it would look like for the areas like curriculum, dual language, those, we wouldn't cut to add back. So that would, that, so that's where, like, when we look at the nuances of looking at the departments, that's where those things would come into play. And there may be some areas that they can be more efficient, that they may say, we do need this in order to do this, but we can tighten up here. So it, it wouldn't be like a flat 3%, but to give you context, that's why there was there. When the principals were here, we did already talk about within their budget, because they do have it in their budget, they've always had it in their budget, they just do it differently. We just said the expectation would be for every department, gray level, to have that supplies component. One of the principals who actually spoke, talked about how much she gave each semester for, and then what that process looks like. It just was not done consistently across the district, and principals are aware that that is an expectation. We are putting it as a budget line in all of their budgets. And so when they sit down with the finance department to walk through that, that is what the breakdown, that's where you'll see that. Hasn't happened yet, because they just started the meetings, and I think that was all.
The other clarifying.
If you can send the, I may have missed one.
I think the other clarifying piece, because I, I was a little confused on this as well, Ms. Russell.
Oh, the 1.2.
1.2, so the 1.12 is the funds remaining from the new funding that are, that's coming through, and then when you subtract all the ESSER continuations, you come to negative 2.4.
It's factored in there already.
So it's, it's 1.2 minus dual, dual language, minus curriculum, minus tech, and that's where you end up with the negative 2.4. I was confused on that as well, until I really dove into it, so it's.
The negative sign.
Yeah, the negative sign, so it's still.
2.0.
2.4 that we're having to find for those continuations.
Okay.
Yes, Dr. Nguyen.
Ms. Kaiser said the 6.6. No, the 3, 1, and 5 are anticipated expenses for those under the master contract.
The health insurance covers everyone, and so does workman's comp. Because you don't, we don't, like, everybody, the 3.5 only includes those. The salary only includes those, so salary increases for classified and administration is not on here.
Good, okay, okay, got, thank you, ma'am. And then the, what's the 3.4, ESSER continuation from current funding sources? That's how they're paid that are not added expenses? What is slide number, slide number nine?
So those are continuing things that can be paid for other funding sources that's not in the general, like, these primarily are grants or federal dollars. With the exception of sped within their current budget, they can absorb what they, those behavior contracts that they have.
Okay, and not to muddy the water any further, are there, then, let's say the specials, the 578,000 does not, the 578,000 comes from the needs assessments? And this is the way to pay for that number?
So these things were reflected in their needs assessments, this is elementary, Ms. getting, yes. So in the needs assessments, when they looked at the things that will help them to get to better academic outcomes, having the common plan times so that teachers, the elementary teachers can meet by grade level, it's something that they said is, they need in order to move forward. And that can be covered with the federal, federal dollars.
And the reason it's, it's categorized like this, because, excuse me, previously, those specials were paid out of ESSER funds.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Now then, are these the only items from the needs assessments that were paid out of ESSER funds?
I don't want to misspeak, these are those larger ones that we're saying we're continuing across the board. There may be some individual buildings within their own needs assessment that they may decide to do some of the things, like, for example, the targeted tutoring that we did this year, you saw some came back and added more on top of what we did, and several of them, they, so that's just an example, so I don't want to misspeak, yeah.
So then, the final question on that, we are, there could still be additional expenses from the needs assessments that are key to student achievement, or are there not?
Based off of what they shared, yes. However, I think they can be paid for what's, what's already allocated to them from the, what we're projecting their building budgets will be. Majority of them, when they went through and looked at it, they have a plan for those things within their building needs assessments. But to your point, something could come up, and then we would have to pivot. But most of them have already thought through that based off of what we said your budget will be, based off your FTE, federal dollars, and/or at-risk funds that can be used for certain programming.
Okay, so you've evaluated their needs assessment forms, and this is what you've come, the administration's come up with?
They're going through the process of their needs assessment forms right now. This is based off of what we know in general from the ESSER survey, but majority of them. Now, there were some things, if you remember when the principals were here, like, somebody said, like, CPR training for all. But we, with that, all of the staff that are required to have CPR training has it. We've offered, like, courses here at the district level if somebody just wants to do it. We, I believe, health service is exploring what that could look like if somebody just wants certification. But all of the staff who was necessary, then somebody else talked about CPI training. We do have a plan in place to teach de-escalation, but in general, every staff member should not be trained to restrain kids, because that's not required for their job, the cost of it, the maintenance of it. But those who are required to have it do have it, and there's a plan for that. So those kind of things that came up, like, from an individual, or those kind of things, as they sit down and work through their department budget, we will discuss. But most of them, when you just look at their needs assessment, feel like the things, their budget allows them to have the things that they feel like is needed in order to move student achievement. But to your point, some, there could be a one-off, and we won't know until they have their individual meetings, which started this week, correct? They start today.
And when do they, what's the completion time?
Is it the end of March, April? First week of April.
Okay, so two weeks, they've got two weeks to complete them.
They have completed their building needs assessments, that's how we've provided them to you. But we've just started the process of having the 40 building budget meetings that start today. So we will have those through the end of the first week of April. We have between four and five per day, they're about an hour long apiece, so it's a pretty busy time for us, but we're trying to get through them as quickly as we can, so that we can provide that information to you.
And that's when they look at their needs assessments and their budget, and they say, well, this is how I'm going to pay for this, that, or another. And then if there's something, an outlier that doesn't fit into their budget, then that's when we look at it and see if that, so that's why I'm saying it may be an outlier, but most of them, when I look at them generically and look at their budget, majority of what they are wanting to do, they can do within their current budget.
So if, if we were to say, as I said, one in three today, then they would know when they are reporting to you, working with you about their department budgets, to take those staff costs, set them aside, protect them, and look for some of those costs that they could make adjustments. And I mean, we're, I'm, I'm using kind words, because we don't want any angst, and I'm not being sarcastic, but I'm saying, at the end of the day, if you're saying, reduce that by 3%, that means there are going to be some, some, some decisions. I don't know if I'm talking to you, I'm talking to you, nevertheless.
I think department leaders at this point know that they would want to start in those places first. I think, depending on what direction.
Can you speak up a little bit? I can't understand.
I think department leaders know that that's where they would want to start. It's non-personal items, if they can, depending on the budget. Frankly, the, the district's budget is 85% salaries, so trying to cut 11 million out of 15% of the budget, it will have to be a lot of work put into that.
Yes, some serious consideration, got it, thank you.
Oh, I have. Questions, yes, Ms. Page.
Just a statement, not a question. When we went to the conference last year for the National Board Association, one of the workshops, and I think you were in it, Ms. Russell, when they were talking about when we do these contracts, that we need to have some standard, that if they're saying if we use their product, 40% of our kids are doing, when it does not, they were saying how we negotiate these contracts, that we need to consider all of that, that if they're guaranteeing we're going to get these results, then they need to stand behind it. And if they don't, then the contracts need to be set up, that maybe they won't get the full amount that they asked for. Because we're doing a lot of business, and sometimes things don't always work out the way they guarantee. That we need to start, begin to do those sort of things. And it's a new idea, but it is something to think about.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
Is that what you meant by guarantee? Because I think Dr.
Yeah, I don't know what exactly what they called it.
Workshop, so.
But they were just saying, you're going to pay them X amount of dollars. They're telling you this will work, but if it doesn't, you can set the contract up to make adjustments, where you're not paying the whole thing, because they're coming with a lot of stuff. This works, this works, but sometime it's not really working. And that we need to set the contracts up, where we're not paying the whole thing if it doesn't work out. That was just something new, that they were saying a lot of districts are beginning to do.
Additional thoughts or discussion on, around the budget? Great conversation. Any other, is there other feedback or information that would be helpful for the board as we're making decisions on our budget process, or on a budget as we move forward? We don't currently have, Mr. Mylan?
Mr. President, Dr. Stup, I do have a comment more than a question. And all what has been said here is really taken in to be very positive. And I thinking when we talking about budget, my opinion, and I'm, I'm noticing one key word when we look at the budget, it says 2024, '25 anticipated expenses. And in, in my understanding, it's, when we look at what's anticipated, many of individuals have done their homework on what has been done in the past, to where we see the foreseeable future when it comes to nursing and what is involved in salaries. It's very, it's a thin line, as Dr. Stupphill has said, when you talk about the baseline decisions. Oftentimes, there needs to be room for, if something needs to be adjusted, to get more nurses to qualify, qualified nurses, if you will, to pay the salaries. So oftentimes, when we, when we talk about anticipation, it just gives us a, the data gives us a, not an absolute, if you will, it's something just to go by. And we just, as a board, just to do the best we can, this is me speaking, to make sure that it's covered for whatever we need. And, and often saying that, not to take a lot of time, it, you can't, maybe if it's something designated to go here, you can't shift it there, you wish you could, I, I guess you can't. If it's needed, if more needs to be taken away from, as, as Ms. Rachel has said, to place somewhere else, I don't think we have that latitude. So, the key word anticipated, anticipation, so I just think we need to see where we are from last year, which I wasn't here, to where we need to be, to where we need to go, to do the best we can to make the decision the best for our, our students and the community as well, whether it's one, or two, or three, I like one and three myself, I'm between that, but I, I really like, like one myself, to give us a broader, broader sense, just, just saying that, just, just, just me speaking, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mylan. Ms. Russell.
Not to go back to a, and I don't want to use the word controversial subject, but I do want some clarity on our next steps with the health services. I think that will help all of us. I think that will help all of us in this process. It continues to be a contentious point of conversation. Did we talk about, we're talking about it at the board retreat. Greg, I feel like I heard you tell me before, but I just want to be clear on when will we be able to have this conversation? Is this an exec board conversation? Is like, what are our next steps? Because I, I, I still do keep coming back to that. And I don't feel like we've ever clearly said, while we've said we can't have this conversation right now, I want to be clear that we all know when we're coming back to this conversation so that it's not like, oh, we're having this conversation today and no one knew we were having this intentional conversation. And so, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you.
If you're asking me, I'm not sure exactly what part of the conversation you're wanting to have. If it relates to the, the salaries for the nursing staff in the district, that's part of the collective bargaining agreement. There has been a reopen a request. So there will be negotiation on that. So that is something that we will be talking to the board about in an executive session at some point under the negotiation exception. If you're talking about other aspects of it, I'm not sure that that necessarily falls within the negotiation part of this. So that there are different aspects of the, of the nursing staff or, or Health Services for the district that may not be included in that part of it. So I just, I'm not, my caution is, I'm not exactly sure what you're asking.
And, and to just clarify, the part that I'm saying that is what Greg is talking about, that is at the table and then what you typically discuss, the salary components are what you typically discuss in exec session. The structure of the department, I don't know if you're, if that's what you're referring to. I think Ms. Lewis gave an update in, last year, and she's due to give another. So structurally, I think they have things like where they are wanting them, where they were running into, where we were running into, what was causing them to go over their budget had more to do around the contracted services. And that's why I'm saying if you're gonna talk about salary, salary adjustments, you can talk about that at any point in the executive session. You just have to put it on there. We just couldn't, we shouldn't have it publicly out here because it's prohibited practices or something, Greg?
Well, it's, it's part of the negotiation process, so we need to honor, we need to honor that. That has to be done.
If there are other questions, I think Ms. Lewis would need to know what are additional information you are wanting to know. We can provide that to you at any time outside of the salary part.
I think the, the two things that I am talking about that go hand in hand, and I just want to be clear. I don't have questions necessarily about the structure, but I think the expectation of what, of how, which I guess maybe is somewhat structure. But part of that structure is built on that salary piece. And because I'm sure we could reduce our budget by 10 mil if we weren't paying agencies as much as we were paying them in our nursing, in our Health Services budget.
Not just Health Services, it's a lot of them. I just don't want to like shot, yes, yes.
But I, any agency that we're overpaying for. And so I think those are the conversations going back to what Ms. Page was talking about at NSBA. It was performance-based budgeting, which is like, hey, if you're saying this is gonna make this work, TPT said this is what, these are the outcomes you're gonna get for giving us 3.1 whatever. Are those the outcomes we got and did we hold you accountable to those things? Or did you just get a paycheck and our kids are still struggling and didn't get the resources they need? And so I think those, that's where I'm trying to figure out.
So structurally, those contracts are different from the contracting agency. Like the contract agencies from the Health Services to Proximity, they're filling positions so that our students have certified whatever in front of them. The contracts around like academic performance from tutoring to whatever, I think is what Ms. Page is talking about. And what we can do, one, I can try to go back and find that session. But when we're looking at the contracts between Greg and or Wayne, we can, that's where we can add the language and we can highlight it for you as we bring those forward, starting in the, for the next fiscal year, because most of the contracts we're under now, we've already had them or when renewals come up. So I've noted that portion. So, yeah, we can do that. Yeah.
Yes, Dr. Wayne.
Somewhat in response to Mr. Reverend Mylan's comment, there are certain, and you, you know this anyway, so I'm not telling you anything you don't know, but there are certain funds that are in silos. You cannot transfer them. But as a result of, of audits, legislative post-audits and past practices, and I've always say, excuse me, at-risk funds are, are an easy target. We have not spent them correctly. Therefore, last couple of years, administration has had to and will probably continue to do, readjust, I'm looking for the words, readjust usage because that is no longer an eligible use for at-risk funds. But there's always a lot of additional funds there. That's just how, how budgets are made. But that, for at-risk, we don't, we don't go over bilingual. That's pretty clear and, and, and clean. And transportations are pretty clean. But at-risk, and with a new list now that one of our Avid programs is not on the accepted list.
It's on there.
It's on there now.
We, they did share out the new list. There are a lot of things that we currently pay for that have been struck through and there are some things. So we are in the process of looking at.
It's a PO process, as you know, but, but it's, the point I'm making, Mr. Mylan, is that because we have spent things that are not eligible to be spent again, the board needs to know that. Administration needs to make adjustments, but that, that does not preclude reducing. It will cause you to shift where you had to, you, you spent it over here. Thought you could spend it over there. You can't spend all that pot of money now. So it's, it's, for me, it's just the knowledge of our board of, of a, of a bigger budget story that we need to know and I don't believe we are always knowing it. So.
Thank you for that. Yeah, yeah.
So just for a point of clarification, so that we will make sure that we're bringing back the right information. We will look at scenario one and three and list out what it means and have that for you. Timeline-wise, I need to get with Steve and them and then we can give you an update in the end of the week. For scenario three, just if you just look at it and do the basic math, the 10 million, like if you are saying you want the.
Tell us, look someplace?
No, if, on that slide, I'm, those two numbers, so the 10 million, reducing it, there will be leftover funds? Are you saying that will go to? Conting, like I, so we'll just say, here is, if you do this, what are we doing with that money will be?
Right.
The question you, you know, I don't want you to answer it today, but what are you, what would you plan to do with that money would be something that we would need to navigate. Because it would.
Well, I'll answer, if you reduce by 10 million, again, you have, you have a specified list right now that, that gives that Department A what that number is. Now, have you, and that's, and that's, that's why I'm, I'm, I don't really appreciate the question. But have you then, within that reduction accounted for number one?
No. Yes.
Within those numbers?
For number one, yes. In every scenario, number one is accounted for.
So, so that form that has Department A reduction is 19 million. You've accounted for anything in Department, anything in number one that is, that is housed in Department A?
We've accounted for number one in every scenario because that's, that's how those numbers got there. Yes.
The question I ask you. If that figure is 19 million, those programs that are in Department A that are addressed in scenario one, they are accounted for?
Those thing, yes, yes.
And you've taken care of everything then?
So I guess my follow-up to your question, which I think is still that why we need a breakdown, is it would be nice and timeline, maybe there's a piece where you're giving some pieces before the other, but it would be ideal that we would still see in both of those scenarios, if there's money left over, what does it look like for it to go into contingency reserve? And what does, what is that impact? But then also, what does it look like if there is a reduction of the mil? And I go back to my statement earlier, that also understanding whether a bond passes or doesn't, what that impact of the contingency reserve and a reduction in the mil does, whether or not the bond passes and those impacts. And I think in my mind, those are three different things. So it's a contingency reserve, a mil reduction, and then the scenario if and/or not the bond passes, these are the options, so that we're getting to see kind of four pictures. And, and maybe it's more than four or less than four, I'm not sure, but that's kind of.
Okay, that, so that, that helps.
I have a question again. If you reduce the budget, that 400 million, that's not the total, by 10.9, what money is left over? That's what you have to work with.
I wasn't, so what I'm saying is, we know that in the 10 million, those things that are in scenario one are taken care of. Like when we adjusted it, scenario one is built into that. So technically, unless you're saying that inclusive of that is the, and I can do some quick math, unless everyone explicitly is saying, well, a reduction of a mil is included in.
I didn't say a mil. I said one in three.
No, no, but that's why I'm saying if you reduce it, you're gonna have the difference between the 10.9 and the 2.4 of money that is there that's not allocated for something. That's what I'm saying. And, and like if you reduce the mil, then it covers.
I'm not looking at number two. I'm just looking at number three. Reduce the budget by, you have a, you take 400 million, you take 11 million from it. You have an X amount.
If you take the 10 million, like if we reduce the budget by 10 million, we've covered everything in scenario one. The only thing we have not talked about is classified and administrative salaries or other things that may come up. You're talking about about $7 million that's not allocated, that unless the legislative formula changes, we would need, we would have to figure out, is it going to contingency? Are there other, like that's what I'm saying to you. Yeah. And that's why I'm saying you don't have to decide it today, but that's what. So in scenario one, you are at a balance. You have these programs. These departments have this. This is what we're moving forward with. In scenario three, you have those things that are in scenario one and then you have the difference between those two numbers that we've pulled from wherever. And now what are we gonna do with those funds? Because we're not in the, there hasn't been things identified that, that will cover. So that, so we can pull it, I just, and I don't, and I'm not asking you that.
Mm-mm. Because it could come from the needs assessments straight off the bat.
Yes, yeah, it definitely.
Okay.
Yeah.
To be determined.
To be determined. Okay.
I think helpful to, to see what that timeline would be to pull some of that information. And I would just, I, I mean, I think, so what I'm hearing is those scenarios, one and three, and kind of putting some depth to it and so that the board can see what that impact is. I would also, to Ms. Russell's point, just, I'm looking at from the inequity standpoint, some of those pieces that Ms. Russell mentioned that we talk about, whether it's athletics or Health Services or some of those other pieces. Like what is that, how does, the 3% reduction, like what is, how does that impact? And I would throw in there also our safety and security, like budget information. Because I see that as a, as a priority in today's age as well and just making sure that, you know, what are, what does that mean? So like I'm, I'm a little, me personally, right? I, I think the scenario one is, is where I had landed on. I mean, I, I'll appreciate seeing the numbers, the information for, for scenario three, but I just worry if we are cutting budgets, but we're still asking for a lot of the things that we want to see, like how does that balance out? So that, that's where I'm wrestling as well, is, you know, we, we want and are asking for, for more in certain situations. But we're also asking for.
That's helpful because if there is an area that you all identify as a priority that you feel like should have more money, we can reallocate it at that point. But, so I, that's, I was just getting clarity on that. So I think that helps us to know what we're working.
And I think some of those pieces that we've talked about today are represented in the board priorities that are on the list. So I think reflecting back and just always going back to that and always keeping like, hey, what's best for our students, right? And, and again, looking at our board priorities, and I think we all have that at heart, is what's best for our students. How we get there may be different, but it's always what's best for our students and we've had our board priorities here. And I think that's where there was a question, if there's something drastically different from those board priorities that would be helpful for, for us to discuss or for staff, administration to know. But I think like we're talking, what, what I'm hearing is like there's consistency around, we want to see our outcomes and about continued evaluation of programs, know whether they're effective or not. And, and for those that aren't, how do we reprioritize or shift? Or if we need to cut something that's not working, you know, that's what we do. But it's always based on those evaluation outcomes, going back to our, what's best for students and tied to our strategic plan and budget, or board priorities that are kind of leading the conversation. So, so I think that'll be helpful for us is to see those scenarios and to come back with that information that you've kind of recapped for us here. So knowing what that timeline would be so that then we can find a date to come back together. Or maybe that's on the 26th when that happens. But I also know that there's some timing issues that we want to make sure we get, get this done. So I just want to make sure we're all, so note, we don't need to make any, what I'm hearing is some consensus around these two pieces, scenarios one and three, getting some additional depth to what that looks like.
And Arindya, if I can just add, I think part of my dilemma is that when we talk about innovative or new ideas, there's always like, well, where are we gonna find it? So, and I'm just, I'm not saying there is, I have had any conversation with anyone else. But I am saying in that instance, when there is $10 million and we keep talking about how our schools are set up, very similar to how they were back in ag days, well, if we have $10 million, I can tell you what you can do with $10 million to be innovative because I've listened and I've taken the information from numerous conferences where they've piloted those things. We don't currently in our budget anywhere have the opportunity to pilot anything. And so if we take a little from everywhere or whatever, it gives us that opportunity. But we also truly have to continue to look at whether a bond passes or not. We have facility issues. We also have overcrowding in our, in a couple of our high schools. And so how do we relieve the pressure in some of the other buildings? And I'm not saying that this is what I'm saying we should do. I want to be clear about that, but I do want to be clear that we have to find the dollars somewhere to be able to have those innovative conversations or to say, yes, this is important. Let's invest this $10 million here, or let's create a rainy day fund or, or contingency is what it's called. I shouldn't call it a rainy day fund. I'm sorry. To be able to support some of these things that we may not have grant dollars because the state and all those other entities are going through the same thing that we are with dollars or less or dollars don't go as far anymore. So, thank you.
Yes, Dr. Wayne.
That's why I like to work from that perspective backward. That's why I'd like to work from that perspective backwards to say, if, and when you were not here, we had, and hopefully we hear from the elementary people first on the 26th?
Yes, because they were last. We'll start with them.
One of the questions I asked, I said, think outside the box, and boxes cost. But that if you ask your building leaders to say, you know what, set some, frame it high, everyone, I, I'm, I'm not afraid to say, cut, cut it, sit it over here. But if there's, and then choose your priorities. I mean, what I, what I, what I don't like, and that's not the right word to put it, is that when you say, we're going to have zero base budgeting, but that's baloney. Because when you tell somebody, you start with your 10 million that you've had the last 20 years, that's not zero base, the way I understand it. Maybe, I don't know. But, but to say, let's, let's not get down to the bone, because the bone is, is not where you want to be. But cut some of the fat out, cut some of the padding out, cut some of the excess out, some, cut out some of the soft. And then let's, let's deal with those needs assessments. Let's deal with what they said. They needed a full-time, we probably shoot the cost up, they needed a full-time RN. I think the, the.
That's what the elementary people.
Elementary said, they needed a full-time RN in every building. Well, yai, but that costs. But if that's what they said their needs are, let's respect what they say their needs are, and then figure out how to do it. But, but again, it's, it's perspective. Is it half empty or is half full? When I say cut, you, many people go immediately, oh, half full, half empty. I'm like, let's, let's do the, the budget, the, you know, let's, let's, let's know exactly what's in these dollars. And I don't think we do. And that's, that's my question all the time, but nevertheless, thank you very much.
I think we're pretty clear. I'm looking at Mr. Lilly, Ms. Kaiser, and we can provide that. And then with that, you know, how decisions are made or that kind of thing, you, that would allow you some time around there with the information that we're providing, so.
Thank you. Thank you, board, for the conversation discussion questions. As additional questions come up, as always, please send those to Dr. Stubblefield. And as you're preparing, as we're preparing for the meeting on the 26th, continue to review those needs assessments. If there are specific questions that you know ahead of time, it would be helpful just so that staff can find information that they need to, to respond to questions, if you could send those ahead of time, but they'll be happy to respond as they come. So as we prepare for that meeting on the 26th, that would be helpful. As additional information is, is needed or questions pop up from today's conversation, then those along Dr. Stubblefield. But we'll, we'll circle back, we'll let our staff kind of put their heads together and think around what the timeline would be to bring the information back. We'll get with Ms. Smith to find an additional time and Dr. Stubblefield to continue the conversation, to review those, those, the information that's brought forward, and then we'll go from there. So thank you all very much for your time. Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield and staff for the information. There are no other questions. We'll give you back 10 minutes of your day. So with that, this meeting is adjourned. Have a good rest of the day.